Good morning. Welcome to the October 22nd Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll begin with roll call.
Sue Eizer Brandau.
Here.
Sue Eizer Mendez.
Here.
Sue Eizer Pacheco.
Here.
Sue Eizer Quintero.
Here.
Chairman Magzig.
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Next on the agenda is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. This is going to be led by District Four.
Okay, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Jake Osborne of The Wall Kingsburg. He has been in ministry for 14 years and is very passionate about helping people experience in love and transformation way. Welcome Pastor Jake.
Thank you Board of Supervisors.
Friends.
Thank you for having me. Let's pray. Thank you Lord for the way you create space. Thank you for how you have gone before each and every person in this room today and prepared a space in them to receive your love and your wisdom. Thank you for God for how you meet us in this time and place with your will and provision. We ask that you would remove any compulsions of animosity within us. Would you remove our flaws and our compassion and give us the eyes to see the opposing perspectives with hearts as soft as a breeze? Release our postures of partisanship and relinquish the manmade burdens within us. Give us eyes to see and ears to hear our fellow image bearers as others who desire joy and peace. Give those who are stewards of others time and resources and abundance of wisdom so that the plans they have made create life, health, and goodness. Give those who make decisions provision so that the God ordained plans can become a blessing to our communities. May the Central Valley be a place known for wise planning, caring compassion, powerful stewardship, and abundant kindness. May our words be not like weapons for war but a salve for wounds. May our lives reflect goodness and gentleness. May our plans be providential and considerate of the poor, the widowed, and the orphaned. May we always be attuned to the cross of Christ and how we brought heaven to earth so that we might experience a taste of future glory. May we live lives of servitude and sacrifice with the knowledge that our lives are not our own but are simply on loan from the God of the universe. May we love and lead well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. And I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Any members wishing to make comment or modify the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We now move to item number two. Approve consent agenda item numbers 24 through 49.
I have a request from the public to pull item 25, which I'd like that item to be heard right after item four because it's a proclamation as well. Board members, any other items wishing to be pulled besides item 25? All right, hearing seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to pull an item off of consent or comment on the remainder? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously.
We now move to item number three. Under Board of Supervisors, retirement representation of retired plaque to Clark Crepo, District Attorney's Office, 20 years of service.
Excellent. So at this time, I'd like to call forward the District Attorney's Office and Clark and any members of his family. I see Monica back there. And the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman Magzig, Supervisors, and CEO Nerland for this opportunity to recognize Clark Crepo. My name is Lisa Biggs and I'm the Chief of Investigations for the Fresno County District Attorney's Office. I had the privilege of working with now retired Deputy Chief Clark Crepo for over 20 years and today I have the honor of telling you all a little bit about his distinguished career with our office. Clark began his career with the DA's office in June 1997 as an investigative assistant. He worked as an investigative assistant while attending the police academy which he graduated from in December of 1998. Clark was sworn in as an investigator one in May 1999 and transitioned to investigator two in May of 2000. In addition to his duties with the District Attorney's Office, he was also a reserve deputy with the Fresno County Sheriff's Office from August 2001 to May 2003. Excuse me. 2003 was a difficult budget year and resulted in several layoffs to the investigative staff. Consequently, Clark went to work for the Fresno Police Department until August of 2004 when the opportunity arose for him to return to the District Attorney's Office. Clark promoted to senior DA investigator in 2005. During his time as an investigator, Clark worked a variety of units including welfare fraud, general felonies, and auto fraud. But it was his time as a senior investigator assigned to the adult compliance team that was most notable. This was a critical position responsible for a joint and cooperative effort involving offender supervision and public safety. In conjunction with other law enforcement agencies, Clark managed the dissemination of offender information, employed early intervention techniques, provided surveillance, and organized and participated in warrant sweeps. Clark was instrumental in reducing recidivism by targeting post-release supervision of offenders and ensuring they were adhering to the conditions of release. In 2013, the Optimist Club of Greater Fresno recognized Clark for his work at their annual Respect for Law Luncheon. In November 2017, Clark promoted to Division Commander where he supervised our Public Aid and Training Division as well as major crimes which includes our gang and homicide units. He was also instrumental in the creation of our Cyber Lab and Drone Program. Throughout his career with the office, Clark was involved in several ancillary duties including firearms instructor, arrest and control instructor, first aid and CPR instructor. He also served on our Officer Involved Shooting Team and was a team leader for our Special Response Team. Clark completed his 25-year career on August 16th, 2024 as a Deputy Chief over Special Operations. Clark's commitment to public safety and our community has been evidenced through his tenure. We want to wish Clark all the best in the next chapter of retirement and we thank him for his many years of dedicated service to the people of the county of Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you. And Clark, would you like to step forward? And I don't know if there's anyone else here from your family you'd like to introduce? We'd love to hear a few words of wisdom from you and again, congratulations.
It's difficult to express adequately my gratitude for the people that I worked with over the years. I watched a lot of people walk into this room that I've known for many years. In fact, I was thinking even of Assistant Chief Galardi when we were out on the west side cruising around on Operation Gold Stars looking for whatever we were looking for on the west side. But a lot of years ago, doing things like that, probation, working with probation, and in our office, the men and women in our office that I was able to work with, obviously they are going to be memories that I hold dear and will treasure and be able to tell stories about for many years to come, especially with grandchildren maybe sometime in my future. But and to my wife, my deepest gratitude to my wife that for a law enforcement officer, it's a difficult duty to go out and then be on the front lines and doing search warrants and looking for people on the street and to come home and not have something bad happen to you. I've told people as they ask, you're retiring. I said, I'm retiring with my life and my wife. And so those are kind of nice things. So I just appreciate the county. I appreciate the District Attorney's Office, Lisa Smickamp and the leadership there. And then Chief Lisa Biggs, just appreciate her and her leadership. And I know she'll do a great job and the commanders and the people at DA's office, they'll always be dear to me and I always will support them in whatever endeavors they go towards the future. Thank you.
Well, congratulations and well done. Board members, anyone wishing to make any comments? I'll make one quick one. So I've known you a long time. It was kind of interesting, as you know, when someone retires, there's a letter that the Chairman of the Board signs. And I'm signing this just going, there's a lot of decades, you know, looking back. And I'm honored to have known you and to continue to know you. You've done a great job here at the county. I hear nothing but wonderful words. You will be missed, but if you want to come back and work part-time, we're always looking for good help. So with that, if you can please come forward, we have a plaque. Oh, you have a comment? Stop, please.
Clark, I want to thank you. I know I didn't, whenever I would call you, which I didn't call you too many times because you were pretty detailed in the reports you turned out, but for clarification purposes. But I really want to thank you for your professionalism and your dedication to the county. So I'll second Chairman Magzig's recommendation. If you want to come back, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
So at this time, if you want to come forward and anyone else that has come along with you, we'd like to get a picture with you. We have a plaque, a letter, and some other items just thanking you for your years of service here at the county.
We now move to item number four. Under Board of Supervisors, adopt resolution recognizing Fresno County Stock Clerk Douglas King for his dedicated service to Fresno County.
With that, we've got Mr. McComas here and others. So please, the floor is yours.
What up Doug? Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Doug King. Usually we do these for retirements, but Doug, we hope, has no intention of retiring anytime soon. Right Doug?
Right.
Good morning, I'm Steve McComas, Under Sheriff of Fresno County and it's my honor to be here and recognize and honor Sheriff's employee Doug King. A man whose career and life exemplify dedication, integrity, and service. Doug King, a name synonymous with hard work and commitment, has been a cornerstone of the Fresno County Sheriff's Office for decades. Born in Los Angeles County and having served in the United States Navy, Doug's early life was already a testament to his service. His journey took him from the Navy to Fresno County where he dedicated his skills and heart to the people and community around him. Doug's story is one of perseverance and loyalty. Starting as a stock clerk at the County General Hospital, he moved to the Juvenile Hall and into the Sheriff's Office where he became the go-to person for managing materials and equipment for every unit. His attention to detail, tireless work ethic, and ability to maintain order amongst the growing demands of the Sheriff's Office have been nothing short of remarkable. What makes Doug truly special isn't just his professional dedication, it's his personal touch not only to the job he does but to the lives he has touched over his nearly six decades of working for the county. Whether delivering packages, ensuring inventory accuracy, or working for five different sheriffs throughout his career, Doug's consistency has been a steady and reassuring presence. Beyond his career, Doug's deep devotion to his family shines through. His love for his late wife Caroline and their children, grandchildren, and great grandchildren is evident in everything he does. Even today, he honors his wife's memory with visits to her resting place, a testament to his enduring love and dedication. Doug King, on behalf of the Fresno County Sheriff's Office and the entire county and everyone whose life you have touched, we offer our deepest appreciation for your outstanding service. Your professionalism, your work ethic, and your commitment to your family and community, you are to be admired and emulated. We are honored to have you, to have had you in our midst. Thank you Doug for everything you have given. You are a true inspiration to us all. There's one thing I kind of left out in the speech, besides Doug's nearly 60 years of service, Doug is still actively working for the Sheriff's Office and he had his 90th birthday on Sunday. That's nine zero. And he's still, I think he's, I'm going to say the most senior employee in the county, okay? Because usually when I say the old word, I get in trouble. Right? But we're really grateful to have Doug. I've known Doug for my entire career. He was here before me and I just can't say enough about what he does and the inspiration he gives to all of us for his decades of long service. So thank you Doug for all that you've done for the county and for the Sheriff's Department and the residents of our great county. Yeah? Doug, you want to say something?
I appreciate every, all the county departments I've worked for. And I think Sheriff's Department's my favorite. And but it has been a privilege to spend my time here. And I look for lots more days. But when I started working for the Sheriff's Department, which was in 1987, I didn't have any grandkids, but I got eight of them now and two greats. And it's been, all these people have been supportive of me. And I just really do appreciate everybody with the county and it's been a privilege to work for the county.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you. And with that, Board members, any comments from Board members up here? Sal, please. We'll start with Sal.
Doug, I want to thank you for your dedication and all the hard work that you've put in for the county. They did mention that you've served under five sheriffs and I'm sure you've really, you know, from what I've heard and everything, you've really enjoyed the work that you've put in and very proud, something to be very proud about. But also it's, you know, you're 90 now, you said? Yeah. Well, you know, it's, there's two quotes that I was reminded of as they were speaking. One was that, and you fit it perfect, is that age is a state of mind. So you just, you stay young. The other one is kind of a quote from back a few years and I'm sure Dave Wassmiller will remember this one. It says, "It ain't the flow of the river, it's the motion in the ocean." So you keep the motion going. All right? Thank you so much for all your work.
Thanks.
Buddy? Just a couple of quick comments. So according to this resolution here, you first started at the county in 1961.
Right.
So that means that you've been working with the county for 63 years. And I know we just had State of the County, we recognized an individual who's been working for the county over 50 years. So I just want to congratulate you and I want to challenge our staff. I'm curious to know, has anyone worked for the county longer than 63 years? Because if so, I want to meet them. But I appreciate your dedication, your continued commitment to the county. And as I'm sitting here doing math, because I sit on the Retirement Board, FSR's Retirement Board, 60, you know, 63 years, you have literally ultimately created two full pensions. That's the amount of work that you've worked here. Most people hope to only work maybe three quarters worth of a full career and you've done two. So that is absolutely amazing. But for you, it's clear that this isn't about money, it's a labor of love and it's one where there's mutual benefit. We receive benefit from you and of course, I'm sure you receive benefit from the county family and we really appreciate your longevity and hope for many more years. So thank you for your dedicated service. One last question. Have you ever received recognition by the Board of Supervisors for your longevity? All right, well, that is, I'm glad that we can honor you today and you should have been honored a long time ago. So thank you for being here. With that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for a motion to approve the resolution. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimously. Please come forward, we have this resolution for you and we want to get a picture with you. No, 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 no. It's comparison, comparison thing, that's all.
We now go to the items that were pulled from this morning by Chairman Magzig. Item 25, proclaim October 30th, 2024 as weatherization day in Fresno County.
And I believe we have some representatives from Fresno EOC here who would like to make some comments. I see Emilia Reyes and Sherry and others, Tish, the amazing Tish, Gilda Aragine, Matthew Contrastano, who is an incredible orator, we'll be hearing from him later. But maybe we should hear from the CEO first.
Thank you for the lovely introduction Supervisor Magzig. Thank you all to the County Board of Supervisors and CEO for having us here today. Thank you Supervisor Magzig. About 15 years ago, you spearheaded our Energy Services out in Fresno EOC. And for those of you who don't know, Fresno EOC provides 35 different programs, all the way from food insecurity to education to health services to home safety to housing, employment and training, you name it. And one of our programs that we're highlighting really today is energy, which is weatherization day. And weatherization day is really celebrating the Department of Energy's efforts on highlighting and supporting our low-income households to get them energy efficient. Now more than ever, the last two years, you all know, utilities has increased dramatically about 30%, the last two years. So home energy efficiency is more important now more than ever. And I can't thank Chairman Magzig for highlighting it today because now more than ever, the County Board of Supervisors really recognizing our households with low income, that they also need to have that home energy efficiency so they can save energy as far as utilities and expenses because a lot of the households here in Fresno County, a third of their income goes to utilities assistance. So thank you, I commend the County Board of Supervisors for recognizing these efforts and celebrating weatherization day. Today, I have the privilege of having the amazing leadership team from Energy and Weatherization and they introduced themselves. But I also want to recognize how long they've been working with this program. And I'm going to let each of them introduce themselves and say how many years they've been working in weatherization.
Hi, my name is Letitia Conway. I've been in weatherization for about 20 years, but with EOC for 25 years.
Hello, my name's Gilda Aragine and I've been with Fresno EOC 26 years.
Hi, Matt Contrastano with Energy Services, the manager. Been there a little over nine years.
Good morning, Sherry Neal. I am the Programs Officer that oversees Energy Services. This is my second tour of duty and I've been with the agency about seven months.
As you can see, we have a committed team that is really here to help and support our low-income families and really fight to end poverty, but really to have their homes energy efficient. And I can't thank you all enough for recognizing this day.
Thank you. Any comments for our members from EOC? Couple of quick comments that I have. So appreciate all of you. I can remember when I first started at Fresno EOC, a long time ago, I walked in, Tish was there and she looked at me and she's like, this guy's not going to last two weeks. But over that time, she taught me a lot and I learned so much. The 35 different programs that you have, I want to say there's between 100 and 200,000 people and even more than that that receive services every year at Fresno EOC. But in the weatherization department, tens of thousands of homes have been touched over the course of the last really 50 years dealing with weatherization, watching how it's advanced, whether it be senior citizens, people who are just living in abject poverty, where you come in, have opportunities to replace windows, add insulation, make sure that furnaces are working properly and there's no combustion safety hazards. And then of course, with Gilda, dealing with the cash assistance side, many people who can't afford to pay their PG&E bill and they're close to having their power shut off and they reach out to Fresno EOC and EOC is able to step in and help keep the lights on. And just the many, all the low-income families and people in need of Fresno County at one time or another, I'm sure have interfaced with EOC. But weatherization is a big part of that and I'm very proud of the work that you do helping the less fortunate in Fresno County. So thank you for that. So anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this particular proclamation? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion for approval. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And Amanda as well is part of the EOC team and I'm excited that you're working as well. But I'm going to ask those representatives to come forward. We have this proclamation, we'll get a picture with you.
That concludes all consent items pulled from this morning. We now move to item number five. Under Sue Eizer Brandau, conduct first hearing to amend the Ordinance Code of Fresno County Title 15 to add Chapter 15.90, vacant structures and buildings, waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety inside the second hearing for November 5th, 2024. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Governor Code Section 25124B1.
Supervisor Brandau, I'll hand the floor over to you.
All right, thanks Mr. Chairman. And this is an item that we looked at here a couple of meetings ago and we asked to have it brought back with some modifications. And so I'm not going to go, because we actually had a full conversation that day about it. So I don't need to repeat everything, but we might have some new folks in the crowd or watching that would need to hear a few things. So this is about addressing blighted properties in urban parts of Fresno County, which I represent a lot. And I know several of you also represent urban areas inside of our county. And there's two sister ordinances here, number five and number six, but together, number five is talking about blighted buildings that are just sitting vacant. And then this, and number six is more specifically about graffiti. But together, the two things tackle some of the problems that I face in my district, which is when somebody, and maybe they live 300 miles away, but something happens in their family and they shut down, they shut down a house or they shut down a building in a neighborhood and then it becomes an attraction for crime and sometimes homelessness and sometimes just other activities and things fall apart and property values go down and other things, other negative things happen. So over the course of time, we really wanted to address this and these two items address it. I'm going to ask County Council and Public Works if they'd like to be more specific on what these two ordinances do, but that's what we're looking at this morning.
Any questions for staff or, I know Supervisor Pacheco, I appreciate the comments you made at the last meeting.
I just wanted to say I appreciate Supervisor Brandau in making those revisions to exempt some of our ag structures who aren't blight but have some historical perspective and that way they're not caught in the crosshairs of this. And I'm good to go with this resolution now.
Any other comments from Board members?
Oh, okay. Do we not, we're not going to get a presentation then, then that's fine because we did talk this through. So if that's, do we have comments from the public?
I got to open up to the public still. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action on item five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number six. Under Supervisor Brandow, conduct first hearing to amend the Ordinance Code of Fresno County Title 10 to add Chapter 10.3, graffiti abatement, waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety, and set the second hearing for November 5th, 2024. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance, and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Government Code Section 25124B1.
Supervisor Brandow, the floor is yours.
Same thing. This one's specifically about graffiti. And so it talks about when properties get graffitied. Again, they attract blight, and other negative things start to spiral out of control. So this, in a firm way, talks about dealing with this graffiti. And so we appreciate that the graffiti team for Fresno County is underneath the Sheriff's Department, and they're really busy. But a lot of times, people out in the public that have their properties graffiti need to help us deal with that. And so instead of let property spiral out of control. So we can go out to public comment, or we can have questions of staff, if you guys are open to that. But again, last time when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, my rural-based colleagues did not want some of those properties out in rural Fresno County to get caught up in something. Sometimes it's a real urban problem. And so staff went back to the drawing board and made it work so that it focuses in on urban blight.
Council, you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just add, although the, this ordinance does apply countywide, the focus is for urban areas. And with the clear direction of the board and the CAO, you know, code enforcement, and the sheriff will focus on, you know, as a standalone issue, the graffiti will be in the urban areas that this is going to focus on. There's also, we still have the existing ordinance which allows cooperative landowners to get assistance from the county to clean up graffiti in the right instance as well.
Will that be in kind of a, in a form of a directive once this ordinance passed?
Yes. I think staff has heard that very clearly, both from last week's discussion. What it does by still keeping it countywide is when we have other enforcement issues on a property, it would be a little funny if our ordinance would allow us to get, seek reimbursement for picking up the trash, but not for the cost of maybe cleaning off graffiti. And that's how we envision that, you know, occurring in any, you know, we're not looking for individual standpipes someplace that has a graffiti mark on it to go see somebody up.
You know, you're being recorded.
I do, and I'm making a representation of what my understanding is of the direction of the board and the CAO, you know, to not be unreasonable in terms, you know, this provides a good tool for us to help the neighborhoods that are heavily impacted by this. But we're also aware that we're spread out over one of the largest counties in the state, and it's very difficult for property owners, particularly in the rural areas, to know every detail about where, you know, what's been done on some parts of their property. And I think it was stated by the supervisor last time, the intent of this is not to victimize the victims. It is to help us protect neighborhoods primarily in the urban areas.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
We now move to item number seven. Under Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator, approve amendment to the salary resolution adding eight positions to Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrators' Order 3111, and deleting eight vacant positions from Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrators' Order 311, effective October 28th, 2024.
Sheriff, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairman Magzik, members of the board. So there's a bunch of different moving parts in this, but essentially, we're adding eight positions and deleting eight positions. There's no increase in net county costs. We look at some of the positions we're adding. The one is the DNA backlog grant-funded criminalist, and the other will be our financial analyst, which we're using Cal Ames funding. And the financial analyst will be tracking a lot of what goes on at the jail related to incarcerated persons, and the ability to collect Medi-Cal funds during their last 90 days in custody. So that's a very key position. It's obviously third-party funded. Hopefully, it'll increase some of our revenues over there, because I need them. But, and looking at this in its entirety, with the no increase in net county cost, the biggest change on here is, yeah, there's addition of positions, deletion of process servers, and some office assistant positions. But the conversion of our Administrative Services Director and deleting that position, and increasing our allocation of sheriff's captains to take over the position that was previously held by the Administrative Services Director, that's the biggest change. There's no increase in net county cost for these positions. There's obviously third-party funding. It will really help with the organization of the sheriff's office. It's going to help with our operations, and it'll help with the redistribution of our collateral assignments throughout the sheriff's office. Because currently, with the Administrative Services Director's position, a lot of our collateral assignments require you to be a peace officer, and therefore, those collateral assignments cannot be assigned to that individual. And looking at the bureau that the Administrative Services Director is responsible for, it also includes our IT Department and our coroner and public administrator, in addition to the business office. With that change to a sheriff's captain, we'll also be adding an additional unit under that position to more balance out our units, our bureaus, and our divisions within the sheriff's office.
Excellent. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions for the sheriff? All right. I want to thank the CAO and the sheriff for working together on this particular item to bring it forward. And with that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion from the board. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you.
We now move to item number eight. Under Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator, conduct first hearing to amend Fresno County Master Schedule of Fees, Charge and Recover Cost Ordinance by amending subsection 2609 of section 2600. Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator, waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety, and set the second hearing for December 3rd, 2024. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance, and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Government Code Section 25124B1.
Interesting. We'll see. Well, since no one's rushing forward, I'm going to turn to the CAO. Everything flows through the CAO's office, so Paul, it's your time to shine.
Yeah, boy, the room cleared there. I don't know. You know, weren't supportive of this item. I mean, the theme of this is collecting, you know, for the cost that we're incurring. And so I can answer any questions that you may have unless there's another member of the sheriff's team that would like to come represent. But I'm in support.
That was quick. Good morning. Regarding the master schedule of fees, is there any questions?
Nope. Just with the fee schedule, I know that it's kind of self-explanatory, but with costs increasing, you're still pretty confident that with this fee schedule, we are capturing as much of our costs as possible?
Yes, absolutely. When you look at the cost of what's been going on with the MOUs and salary increases, yes, this will capture our costs as we're moving forward. And I think it's, it's just important to note that a lot of times when we're talking about our master schedule of fees, especially with our deputy sheriff positions, there's some individuals in the community who have a lot of questions as to why it's costing so much. And explaining to them is like, hey, everything is kind of increased in cost. You know, we've had a lot of inflation. With 3% salary increases for our deputy sheriffs and a lot of positions within the sheriff's office, that's also caused the master schedule of fees to increase too, when it comes to the hourly rate for the different positions.
Any questions for the sheriff on this one? All right. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on item eight? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for a motion. We're going to take Steve as the second, since I think Sal already has a couple seconds. So motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We now move to item number nine. Under Administrative Office, adopt resolution updating the Fresno County Operational Area Master Emergency Services Plan and authorize emergency services directors to implement future updates to the Fresno County Operational Area Master Emergency Services Plan in compliance with local, state, or federal codes.
Staff, the floor is yours. Terry, Ron, who's going to go first? All right, there we go.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Terry Maherato with the Emergency Office of Emergency Services. I'd like to just take an opportunity real quick to introduce our staff at OES. We have Jason Passmore, who is an emergency management specialist, as is Dave Davis, and then we have Sarah Villa, who is our staff analyst. So all three of them were very instrumental in creating this plan and helping me coordinate, as in day-to-day operations, and then what we do, of course, during emergencies. So just want to give a real quick presentation on our emergency operations plan. The county of Fresno calls it the Master Emergency Services Plan, but it's an emergency operations plan. So we kept the same look that we have in previous years, just to keep consistency. You'll see that with all of our plans. They all have the same cover page, just the difference of what it is. And then throughout, we really tried to keep it consistent so that it all looked like it fed together. So we prepared this document as, it's our guiding, essentially our bible on how we respond to emergencies. It also includes all of our unincorporated areas, of course. And then it also helps us coordinate with our local city jurisdictions as other departments within the county sheriff's department, Public Works. Within our plan, we created hazard analysis. It outlines our training, and it really gives a concept of operations during an emergency, and helps assist in our response for the county. So the objective is our plan, of our plan is to incorporate and coordinate all facilities and personnel of Fresno County into an efficient organization capable of responding to any emergency. And that's really what we guide through. It's all hazards. So while, you know, earthquakes for Fresno County is not of huge concern, it does concern when, it does affect our neighboring counties, or potentially when the big one hits on the coastline or down south, the potential of what the impacts would be to Fresno County for disaster service workers. So we really incorporate in all hazards, even if it might not affect us here. So this was a document that we went through with every department possible, and we were just really grateful and thankful to the support that we have countywide. We had the District Attorney's Office, we had probation, the sheriff's department, Public Works, fire. We just had every department within the county. And we really sat down, and, you know, one of the last things you want to find out in an emergency is that you have a responsibility that you never knew that you had, and now you have to, you know, respond accordingly. So it's kind of hard to read some of the words here, but all, everything is identified with either a P, which is the darker squares, or as primary, or S is secondary. And so we went through with all of the different departments to really make sure that they knew which portion of a response that they would either be a primary responsibly, responsible for, or they would have a secondary cursory responsibility for. So it really was not only beneficial for us to create this document, because we have to for the plan, but it was really great to sit down with our county partners and really discuss of what the response would be and how we can work together within that. Very proud of this document. Took us, this was, I believe, a total of about six hours to complete this, three different two-hour meetings, but was much greatly needed. So part of our emergency operations plans is we have a couple of standalone plans. They're not necessarily annexes, because they can stand alone, but they also directly feed into our emergency operations plan. And one of those is our care and shelter. And so this plan, it identifies the different types of shelters, whether it's just going to be a temporary evacuation shelter, or if it's going to be a full-blown shelter. It identifies our equipment supplies that we have here, who would staff it, our concept of operations, and what our roles and responsibilities as a county includes. The next plan we created is our public information and outreach plan. So again, goals and objectives as an organization on how we want to message out to our residents. And then we really want to make sure that we're always using our whole community approach. And I think the county is so good at this because we are so diversified within Fresno County. So we really wanted to outlay how we'll reach out to all of segments of our community, whether it's access and functional needs, socio-economical. We want to make sure that we are really alerting everybody during an emergency. And then we move on to our recovery plan, which the recovery plan, as most people know, during an emergency, the recovery is the biggest lift. And it can mean the difference of the county being reimbursed tens of thousands, tens of millions of dollars, or simply not. So we really wanted to make sure that we have everything spelled out so that we're in the best position that we can pre-emergency for recovery. So again, same as the other plans, that outlines our goals and objectives, our processes. Of course, we want to build in resiliency, but that's something that we have to build into our plans and really initiate well before the emergency happens. Again, with preparation, letting everybody again know what their roles and responsibilities would be during an emergency. And then we also touch on proclamations, declarations, and then long-term and short-term recovery. So what we're looking for today is a concurrence and approval of the plan from the Board of Supervisors. We really appreciate the Board of Supervisors and all of the departments, and especially the CAO's office, who has been extremely supportive in everything that we've done, from creating these plans to, while we've actually activated in an emergency. Not all of my fellow emergency management partners have the support that we do from our county, and it really shows in their capability to respond to emergencies and assist their citizens. So I am very grateful, and it is, does not go unnoticed, the support that we have. So these are the plans we have completed now. We'll be back soon with our hazard mitigation plan. And then we're also finishing up a drought plan that we will be bringing back in the months to come. But these are our current plans that we're asking for concurrence currently.
Any questions for staff on this?
No, just, I think you have, then, you know, your whole group is way more robust than any of our neighbors. Of course, we're bigger than any of our neighbors, but it just, it doesn't really matter what the response is. I mean, it's, you've kind of, last few years have been real coordinated, you know. So I don't know how much improvement of a plan you had to do from what you were actually doing, but, you know, it's probably good to have it definitely on paper and say, hey, this is the plan.
Yeah, definitely. It's codified now, yes.
But it was really striking in the 23 flood compared to our neighbors, you know, our response, what we were doing compared. It was like, if it was baseball, it was like minor league teams, and they were watching a major league team when they looked at us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
To echo somebody's comments, I agree. I think our response was good, and not just the floods, but, you know, going back to the Creek Fire, I think our response was great. Where we've been challenged a little bit, when we do qualify for FEMA assistance, government assistance, is I know that some of the documentation that they require can be pretty cumbersome. And I know with Creek Fire, we had an expectation of receiving tens of millions of dollars, and we're still working with FEMA, I think, on some of that infrastructure that was damaged. But it is eye-opening when you see just how little reimbursement you get in some cases, as you're going back and replacing culverts, rebuilding roads, rebuilding bridges that have been damaged, and even, you know, a liner of, at a sewer plant that gets damaged, needing to replace that, and just how much you actually get. So all that being said, we appreciate our state and federal partners, but really at the end of the day, it comes down to how we work locally as a community and collectively as a group of counties and cities who all come together. And I think we need more of that. But I'm glad that we've updated this plan, and appreciate your work at getting that done. done. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and Buddy has a question.
One more. How long have you worked for us, Teri?
Two and a half years, almost.
Yeah, because you were kind of like the final piece that kind of put this thing together, right?
We have a great team.
Yeah, yeah, we have a great team, but that was the piece we needed when you--
Thank you, thank you for saying that.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second by Sal. All in favor, oh, you have a comment? Yes, please, Sal.
I also wanted to thank Dan for all the work that you put in as an individual over the years to just keep things going in terms of responding and everything, and then with the, with the team that's coming in, just to bring everything together. So, you were a one-man army, Dan, for a long time, but just want to say thank you for that part as well, putting everything together, Teri, too. Thank you.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 10, under probation, conduct first hearing to amend the Fresno County Master Schedule of Fees, Charge and Recover costs ordinance by amending subsection 1815 daily rate of section 1800 probation.
Chief, the floor is yours.
Good morning Chairman Magsick, and to the board, Kirk Haynes, your chief probation officer. This morning, this item is to amend the master schedule of fees. It's, this marks the first hearing to amend the magic, master schedule of fees specifically to the daily rate of section 1800, revising the rate from $380 to $420. The daily rate was established to offset the costs associated with housing eligible youth from other counties at the juvenile justice campus. The new $420 rate is based on the fiscal year 2425 budget, and the approved 2425 ICRP rate, which was increased from the prior years at, from 17.9% to 20.65%. And this also included a much-needed salary increase for our juvenile correctional officers. This rate ensures proper cost recovery, and has been reviewed and approved by the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector. And the new rate will affect current agreements with Merced and Tulare Counties for the care of youth with problematic sexual behavior. Current agreements also already include language stating that any updates made to the, the master schedule of fees will automatically be incorporated with those changes. If approved, the second hearing is scheduled for November the 5th, 2024, and I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Questions for staff on this one? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board. We have a motion, is there a second? If a motion is second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 11, under social services, under administrative policy number 34, from competitive bids or requests for proposal determine that an exception to the competitive bidding requirement is satisfied and a suspension of competition is warranted due to unusual extraordinary circumstances, and that the best interest of the county would be served by entering into an agreement with Pavarallo House.
Amina, the floor is yours.
Good morning Board, Amina Flores Becker, deputy CAO, over homelessness response for Fresno County. The item before you is an eight-month recommended agreement to fund the operations of the remaining 23-bed capacity at Naomi's House of Pavarallo House. Naomi's House is a 34-bed women's shelter. On May 21st, your board adopted an agreement with Pavarallo House for 11 beds at Naomi's House. During the board meeting, during that board meeting, representatives of Pavarallo House communicated a need for funding for the remaining 23 beds. Your board directed staff to continue to work with Pavarallo House and the city of Fresno to find the remaining necessary funds, or return to your board with an agreement to fill the funding gap for the rest of the 2425 fiscal year, to give Pavarallo House an opportunity to either find alternative funding or ramp down services. An agenda item with a proposed funding agreement for the 23 beds at Naomi's House was scheduled to go to Fresno's city council on three different occasions, starting in late July through August of this year. Each time, the item was tabled to the next city council meeting until August 29th, when it was tabled indefinitely, resulting in no action or resolution from the city. Due to the inaction of the city council on this agreement and per your board's direction, staff is presenting this eight-month agreement for the remaining 23 beds at Naomi's House, which will fully fund operations through the remaining of the 2425 fiscal year, allowing time for Pavarallo House to find alternative funding or reduce services. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions your board may have.
Any questions for staff? Please, Sal.
Thirty-four for this fiscal year. After this fiscal year, the county will continue to fund 11 beds.
And I think right now, the county, we're looking for opportunities to fund beds that are able to accommodate women and children, correct? Or families with children.
Correct.
And so, is that going to be part of the strategy as we move forward to try to identify providers that focus on that space?
Yeah, we are actively working on that now.
Okay, and how many, how many housing units are we looking for, or ability to serve families? How many are we needing right now, based upon studies that we've done?
Well, I know the, the shelter that we were looking at had a capacity of 50 beds. The range is, you know, it depends on what, who we end up partnering with, and what shelter specifically we partner with, could be anywhere from, you know, 30-plus beds, the more, frankly, the better, because there is a need for families, specifically family shelter beds.
Is there an opportunity for Naomi's House maybe to repurpose what they have, so they can provide both, you know, 11 beds for single occupants, but then also have beds available for families, which is what we need?
I actually asked that question specifically of Pavarallo House. I don't think they're looking to do that specifically with Naomi's House, but they do have a family shelter that they are, you know, interested in expanding, so we've been in discussions about different opportunities specifically for families.
Excellent. All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for approval. There's a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 11.1, under public works and planning, receive presentation on current and proposed county facility capital projects and provide direction regarding priorities and next step.
All right. Looking forward to this amazing presentation. Mr. Kettler, the one and only.
Yes, sir, how are you?
I'm doing fantastic. It's good to see you, the floor is yours.
Try to keep my portion brief, because we have some folks that may want to say some words about their project, so. This is here to update you on some of our capital projects that are near completion, in the pipeline, and future, so. Current project, the most significant one that's going to be completed here very shortly is the West Annex Jail. I should note that a, the final inspection by the fire marshal is scheduled for next week. We hope to be getting a certificate of occupancy shortly thereafter. The fire marshal did issue a temporary certificate of occupancy on September 9th, so the sheriff's staff is actually in the building and getting used to all the systems. They've already done, they were already authorized to do some training previously, but now they're actually able to occupy their areas and get used to all the systems, and kind of do a shakedown of the building. So, that's actually going, while I talked to one of the lieutenants this morning, and so far, so good, a couple of minor issues have come up, but everything's being addressed. So, a couple interior shots. That's one of the detention levels. We have the main, main and the mezzanine level there. That's the reception area. I don't know if you can see it with the lights, thank you very much, Bernice. It's general office area, training rooms, another command center, guard station up in the detention area, infirmary buildings, infirmary room, laundry down in the basement, one of the main monitoring desks downstairs. And so, that is it on the West Annex Jail. Sheriff's personnel want to speak on this project. We have the chief himself.
Good morning Chairman Magsick, members of the board. So, the long-anticipated opening of the West Annex Jail, I believe, is in our sights, and will be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony, hopefully, before the end of the year. Hopefully, by around Thanksgiving, we will be getting our permanent right to occupy the facility, and then we can start working on our transition and our plan of moving incarcerated persons from the South Annex Jail, and maybe even the main jail, over to the West Annex Jail to start moving people in there, and then getting out of the South Annex facility. I know this project has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of different moving pieces. We've had inspections, we've had 11 or 12 different changes in contractors or builders, that type of thing. It's, it has been quite a journey, but I assure you that once this facility is completed, it is going to improve the efficiency of the jail, it is going to help us with our ADA compliance, and hopefully, improve our programming and everything else that we do at the jail for the incarcerated persons to help rehabilitate them, and make sure that they do not come back to jail. And it is going to be a much better work environment for the employees of the sheriff's office, and other employees from Wellpath, and our other partners that work in our custodial facilities. And hopefully, it will help reduce people who reoffend and are reincarcerated, but it is a very nice facility, and if you have a chance, please go over and take a tour of it. Hopefully, once we get that certificate, we'll be having an opportunity for friends and family, and individuals from throughout the county to come and take a tour of the facility. Is there any questions about the West Annex Jail?
Yeah, please Buddy.
Paul, how long has Jeannie been retired?
I think we're going on over three years, but whenever we have this event, we definitely need to make sure she will be there.
And with that said, Supervisor Mendez, I believe there's quite a few people that anticipated this facility opening quite some years ago, so I'm sure the list of those who are retired and no longer with us that will be in attendance will be long.
And I just want to say, just what a great state, state of California is.
It's my understanding at the reception, you're going to have all-you-can-eat bread and water, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, bread and water, maybe, maybe we'll splurge a little bit, get some lemonade, and, and some of those cookies from Costco, you know, just, just to go that extra mile.
Outstanding, all right. Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the, well, actually, this is just a presentation, so we're not going to get to the public, so let's move on to the next set of structures. Thank you. Will, you're up.
Thank you Sheriff Zanoni. Apologies for the chief comment. I'm used to chiefs. So, upcoming projects we have coming on that are early in the process, going to be real brief on this slide, you saw this slide at the prior hearing with the DB entity selection, was basically the difference between the processes that we're using now, design-build, which we're using on the next two projects, which is for the two libraries of Clovis and Reedley. There are obviously steps missing in these flow charts, but the difference is primarily that design-build, you should almost all but eliminate issues like RFIs and change orders, so, request for information to change orders. So, there's this streamlining aspect, even though there's a lot of work up front, which I'm very grateful to our design division for coordinating the RFQ, RFP phase, they did a phenomenal job, and then design-bid-build is the traditional build process. Clovis Library, this is the elevation that's been accepted by the city of Clovis, as well as your board also reviewed it as well. This is going to, this is design-build, this is a project for which the director was given authority to negotiate at the last hearing, the prior hearing that we had. The target is to return, return to your board on November 5th with that contract, and all indications are good for that. Twenty-four million, 26,000 square foot building, located in the heart of Old Town, just to the north, actually, but right across from the veterans parking lot in the landmark Commons area. And so, this matches somewhat, it was revised to match somewhat the structures that are out there at the city of Clovis right now. Reedley Library, located in downtown Reedley, also design-build, same target, it's about 11, 11,000 to 12,000 square foot building, $13 million, and target to return also with the same contract for November 5th. Located downtown, as mentioned, on 11th Street, and this is the, a couple other elevations. And to speak to the library projects is Sally Gomez, she's present, she'll make a brief presentation.
Good morning, Sally Gomez here, just to give a brief couple of comments regarding our two new projects that we're very excited about. As you know, I don't have to tell you how exciting it is to build new buildings, to replace these two buildings that are both approximately 50 years old, so, long time coming, no doubt. Just a brief mention, obviously, this is going to allow us to increase our collection, but more than that, and one thing that I wanted to highlight is the addition of community meeting rooms in both of these library branches. Currently, neither of these branches have community reading, meeting rooms, so we are limited on the amount of program, the programming that we can do, this will allow us to expand that. It will also provide rooms that the community can use for their meetings and so forth. This will allow us to expand programs such as our promatire giveaway, our poetry ceremony, we're trying to move those to different locations throughout the county, so having additional meeting rooms will allow us to do that. Also, in Clovis, we'll have our first-ever proper teen space dedicated, so that's going to be new, and that'll be a big benefit for teens in the community. And lastly, you know, libraries are known as educational support centers, and currently, neither of our current locations in Reedley or Clovis have proper classroom-style setup that kind of limits our ability to provide programming that helps our adult learners, our teen learners, and even students in the community. So, having these community meeting rooms will allow us to expand and provide some educational support programs for all of our communities in those two areas. And then, lastly, I just wanted to mention that without having these additional spaces, it's difficult with our summer at your library reading program, which is a support that helps the summer slide, which is the, the months that children and students lose their reading rates because they're not in school. And when we have to move them off-site, as we do in Clovis, or when we're limited in the capacity that we can hold, it kind of impacts the users in a negative way. Example is in Clovis, you know, if we're off-site, they don't have access to register for library cards or check out books while they're on-site, and so, having the programs on-site is very important. We all know that library access increases the amount of time children spend reading, the amount of time that their parents spend reading to children, and it also helps increase homework completion rates, so those are some of the impacts that, that having these new libraries expanded, modernized, with increased collections and additional programming space will benefit. And if you have any questions, I'm available, and I also have other staff that can help answer questions. Thank you.
Sal has a question.
Years ago, when the Sunnyside Library was built, they added something new to the building within the inside, and that was a quiet room. Will these have that?
Yes, I, Clovis will, Reedley should have, yes, both will have quiet rooms.
I recall, it was pretty effective, and it's still effective and used today for, it's a greater little amenity, but it's, they use it quite a bit.
Yeah.
So, both of them will have that.
For sure.
Thank you.
Sally, one thing I would like, I'm sure that you've been provided with a rough layout of where the rooms are going to be, and a footprint of the, the building itself, and I've got the exterior renderings, so, since that's kind of been tightened up, maybe you can send me a PDF of kind of the floor plan? And you don't have that yet? Will will send it. Okay, very good, thank you.
For sure.
Any other questions?
I got a question for Will.
Yes.
Now, does this still look like it's going to come back on the 5th?
All indications are that it will. Information for the contracts has been received, and the quotes, so, yeah.
That was it.
All right, thank you.
And Supervisor Magsick, as you may recall, this project actually started out as a non-design build, so we actually, staff actually prepared the floor plans and had a lot of it verified in the, in the design development phase of the project, so, yes, there is a floor plan, and I can share that with you. The next project is a very large tenant improvement, this is 115,000, 115,000 square foot building, it's a former AT&amp;T building on all of, just west of Clovis Avenue. It's a former AT&amp;T building on Olive, just west of Clovis Avenue. Estimate for $35 million, and it's phased, it's got two phases of the project. First is to secure the building from weather. The roof is in need of repair, and some of the exterior areas are, are degrading, so we have a Phase 1 for that one. That actually bid was released on October 1st, and bid opening is on the 31st. So, that is already in process, and in the second phase, which is currently the plans are in for plan check, for the second phase to get this ready for that bid process. So, this is going through, both phases are going through the traditional bid, what we call design-bid-build, or traditional bid process. So, targets are anticipated that we primarily be constructed by, under construction by spring of '26. To speak to the necessity and benefits of this project is Director Susan Holt.
Good morning, Susan Holt, Department of Behavioral Health. Pleasure to be with you. Before we commence the project, I want to say a shout-out to the Department of Behavioral Health staff. We have not had a consolidated location as long as I've been with the county, so decades, and we're really excited to have efficiencies and economies of scale by co-locating children's and adult services in a centralized hub, separate entrances, separate lobbies for our populations, but the opportunity before us is to have immediate access to consultation, cross-coverage of our psychiatrists, so that we don't have to cancel appointments if a physician calls out sick, and the ability to train and mentor our staff in a singular location while maintaining satellite sites across the county. One of the huge benefits to this location is it is very close to the on-ramp for Freeway 180, which of course, as we know, connects us everywhere in the community within minutes. So, this allows our staff who are out in the field to be able to come back, get consultation, recharge their batteries, but immediately go back out into the field, and we're implementing a treatment room model, which we have tested at one of our locations, where we can share the office space for treatment across all of our clinical staff, maximizing the efficiency and use of space. Happy to take any questions of the board.
Yeah, buddy.
How, how many buildings are you in right now?
We are in, how quickly can Susan do math? We are in six to eight, six to eight buildings.
Yeah. Not 100% sure.
I'd have to count again quickly. We have an office in West Fresno, we have the Health and Wellness Center on Dakota, we have buildings at the fairgrounds, we have the UMC campus, we have Air Fresno, we have the Heritage Complex, so seven buildings or campuses.
Well, some of those sites, you've got multiple buildings on them, too.
Correct.
So, yeah, it's kind of tricky.
It was a trick question, Supervisor Mendez, according to Chairman Magsick.
I like how you did the math. At least you didn't take your shoes off.
Possibly. I do have long toes, so that would have been helpful, but I did count on my fingers, full disclosure for those listening.
Any other questions? I've got a couple of questions. So, I assume that we're going to be going after some Prop 1 funding to help assist us with this building, and maybe that's top secret, but hopefully not, but...
Well, we will soon be coming to your board, coming attractions, to secure a resolution for three applications for bond capital projects.
Excellent. And as I look at this particular building, and correct me if I'm wrong, some of the operations at this site, and why it's so important, is not only will it provide you an opportunity to consolidate a little bit, but also, too, there'll be a lot of prevention activities that will take place here, because your department is more than just trying to house homeless that have behavioral health issues. It's also about intervention, prevention, is that correct?
Yes. So, one of the benefits of this location is that it can serve as expanded capacity for our youth wellness center and our adult urgent care wellness center, which really are the front door for services in our community. They are drop-in centers where anyone can come in or call, and we will provide immediate screening and access to behavioral health services, and this also serves as our hub for reaching out to our youth and engaging our youth, so that we can mitigate the impacts of untreated mental health conditions and be upstream, as you're describing. I did not mention, this would relocate 430 Department of Behavioral Health employees, and we'd have capacity for 76 more in the design of this facility.
Excellent. Steve.
Susan, in your final sentences, you really kind of answered my question. So, you do have some room for expansion?
We do have room for expansion in that location, and we will retain space at the Health and Wellness Center. We do intend to retain space at a leased location, because we really want to be able to expand. So, this Olive location will serve as a central hub for clinical care, and then we'll be able to utilize other space flexibly to meet people in the community at the locations that are most appropriate and convenient for them.
Well, I'm glad for that. I'm, you know, I just am ever mindful that when we did the animal control shelter, it's a brand-new, and it's already completely full. And so, I think we just have to think about expansion, once we purchase or enter into a project like that, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Sal?
Got a question for the CAO. All these drawings, very nice, but my question is, I didn't see any, with the cost of energy, you know, just continuing to go up, are we going to have any, with any of the buildings to include the solar?
Yeah, so the projects that we've talked about here today do not include the addition of solar. We've got other projects that we've looked at, but that is something that can be considered and included, like, but it'd have to be done very quickly to do that, as far as adding it to the project. We've contracted with Forefront for other buildings, is what we've retrofitted, but it's probably something we should be looking at, at this stage.
Yeah. The energy, I don't think is going to get any lower.
No, no. So, we can come back on that.
I think Ed has been taking a look at opportunities to make some of our facilities and building, buildings, a little bit more energy efficient, so I'm sure in the next few months, we might have a presentation from Ed on that very issue, but timely on your part, Sal, so thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments on this one? All right. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
That's just an aerial shot of the building from Olive, and then from a different angle, looking from kind of above head Clovis, looking northwest. So, this last project is the Sheriff of Elkhorn Training Facility. It takes the old campus out there, off of Elkhorn, the June Justice Campus, or the, the farm, I guess, the industrial farm back in the day, and converts it into a regional training facility, which is kind of an exciting project. The first part of the project will be to create the basin for recharge in that area, and that's using some ARPA funding, and that actually is, as mentioned up here, the bid opening was on the 8th, so that project's moving forward and looking at moving dirt late this year, early next year. And to do so, they're going to be creating, through some of the materials, you're going to have your shooting range here, your education facility, and actually, let me go back, I apologize. So, the basin area is actually up in this area here. You have a storage area here for some materials. This is the land use permit site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission on September 19th. So, this is, this land use has already been vetted for the training facility. You have your, your shooting ranges here, long guns, pistols, et cetera, education facility, driver's course, and scenario village utilizing the existing buildings that are out on the campus. So, it, it's an interesting opportunity. A lot of jurisdictions do not have actual buildings to do scenario drills in. They have mazes that are constructed out of temporary walls out in the field, so there's a lot of potential for this building to, to have a regional component, but I'll let the sheriff speak more to that, to this project, if he wants, or under Sheriff McComas, if he wants. And I got his title right this time.
Good morning, Chairman of the Board, board members. The Elkhorn Facility is a unique opportunity for us to build a training facility here in Fresno County that's owned by us, managed by us, and obviously operated by us. Currently, we're at now, out on Weber Avenue, near the river, the range, that property that's owned by the Sheriff's Foundation for Public Safety. I mean, as you know, there's a Costco going in and out there, just south of Riverside Golf Course. You've got homes across the river on Her, I'm sorry, property across the river along Herndon Avenue as it, as it heads out towards Dickinson. That's for sale with all the trees ripped out. The residential areas, the shopping centers, the commercial building is encroaching upon us, and I don't know how long we'll be able to continue training in the manner that we do at that facility, just because of the amount of population and the population density that's coming in and around the area, along with high-speed rail, which has a huge concrete train track running through a portion of the range. I do believe that when and if that becomes a viable train and it's operating, that our days of shooting firearms in that vicinity will be over immediately. So, like I said, this gives us a great opportunity. The scenario villages are just another component of it. They're already there. I know they've been previously used by some law enforcement agencies, but having a range to shoot firearms from rifles to handguns out in this area, and the potential to even build a driving track in the future with an additional phase, along with the fact that it's going to put law enforcement personnel, I believe from throughout the county and from adjoining counties, to come to this location and train, and obviously, our deputy sheriff personnel out there, it's going to give a law enforcement presence in the area, which I do believe will make that area safer for the residents and the individuals who work and live around that area.
Questions for the sheriff.
Will you have enough space to where the, the sheriff's helicopter can land and get in and out of there as well?
Yes, I do believe if you look at the scenario village up there in the middle, so if you look, let's see here, where am I? I gotta hold it, okay. So, right, right here, these are some open fields where, at the Elkhorn Facility, there used to be like softball or soccer fields. I, I do believe that there is enough area there to land our helicopter.
Okay. So, it's going to be your village?
It's going to be our training village, and the hope is that we can bring some of our other county partners that might be doing business other places, like the DA's office, the Public Defender's Office, probation, if they're going out to other ranges at this time, that we can bring them to this facility and help reduce their cost. And then, essentially, getting contracts that are currently handled and facilitated out at the range by the river, we can bring them over here and hopefully start generating revenue from this project.
So, it'll be for the village people?
Well, and I also think that, you know, we've talked to other ranges, and there's people that, or agencies that bring, have days where neighbors and people that live in the area can come and utilize the facility under supervision with, you know, with the right credentials, you know, that they own the firearms and all that. But it's, it's just a great opportunity, I think, to put a sheriff's office footprint out there off of Elkhorn and 41. That's Buddy's area, though.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a question for Will. In, in this first phase, how many yards of dirt are you going to move for the burns there?
Five hundred. Five hundred thousand cubic yards.
Half a million yards?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Mr. Sheriff?
Yes.
Sheriff, I joined you out for lunching at the old property that, well, we're still using.
Yes.
But this last weekend. And, you know, as I was driving there, there's so much going on out there. There's a Costco going to be coming in, in that same kind of area, and streets are blocked off, and houses are there, and there was a big, there's a big equestrian thing going on, well, and it's actually gone on for many decades, too, but there were people out there. I just think, I think this is a much better place for you and all your deputies and everybody involved to go out and process and, and shoot and do all the activities, and, and again, this, like the last item, this location has room for expansion, kind of maxed out over there. But I think Sheriff Mims, she was there also over the weekend, and the current property, that's not owned by the county, right? Isn't that owned by the association or?
Yes, it's owned by the Sheriff's Foundation for Public Safety. They were able to acquire it from the Fresno County Peace Officers Association, probably about a decade or more ago, when the Fresno County Peace Officers Association basically went out of business, and the Sheriff's Foundation for Public Safety took that property over.
Are they, do you know, are they planning on still using that for anything associated with the Sheriff's Department, or they could sell that property, or?
Well, in, in talking with them, in, in order to continue to shoot firearms there, you obviously have limited space, and with the high-speed rail coming someday, but the, the reality is, that location will no longer be viable at some point, and so, for shooting firearms.
Right.
I think you could see by being out there on Saturday, that the park that's adjacent to the river there, with the eucalyptus trees and all that, and the grass and the clubhouse, I do believe that that could still have some uses for the foundation. They could rent that part of it out, but I do believe the firearms portion of it, once high-speed rail is up and running, and once we get more building in the area, is going to impact us, and the conditional use permit, and I believe that, that location in the next probably three years will probably no longer be viable.
I think it's great, because that property, and that, that portion of, the new thing is in Buddy's district, that area is out towards my district, so, you know, it's just, it's been there for many, many years, it's served its purpose, but it's, now it's got neighbors around it and other stuff going on, and I just think this is a fantastic move for the Sheriff's Department.
Well, and it's, it's owned by the county, it's going to be operated by us, so we're not going to be paying rent to somebody or paying, you know, a cost per shooter, or to lease an office and a facility. And I think, as we know, with all the capital projects that are going on and looking at our Area 2 substation, financially moving forward when we're all gone, owning a facility and operating yourself is a much better investment in the county, in our residents, and in our people.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
And actually, the last project is 200 West Pontiac, which is a 104,000 square foot building located on Pontiac Way in the Palco Camp, the former Palco Campus. This would be for the probation department. This was actually mentioned to your board also in May of this year. It's going to be traditional design-bid-build, broken up into office component and then a warehouse conversion for office. We're actually reassessing the costs on this project at this time, that it comes into a perspective with what's in the account, and so, at this time, that's, that concludes the presentation, unless you have questions on this project.
Questions from board members?
I, I have just a quick comment, Chairman, going back to Supervisor Quintero's question on, on solar, just to add a couple things to that. So, our animal services building right now is under construction for solar, and the Olive building is of the ones that we showed, is a future project that's been identified by our contractor forefront. We've also got other projects, like our Woodward Park Library, our Heritage Center, the Health and Wellness Center that was mentioned by Susan, so we've got about 10 or 11 projects identified currently that are in the works, but permits are pulled for the two that I just mentioned.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Is Chief Haynes here, or?
Yep, he's here.
Yeah, okay.
Good morning. Good morning, Board Chair, and to the, to the board. Kirk Haynes, your chief probation officer, and I want to say thank you first to the CAO's office and to Steve White and his, his, his folks. They've been really great to work with as we've walked through the beginnings of what this project is going to look like for us. I did want to give a little bit of background, so thank you Supervisor Brandow for, for asking, but currently, we have four separate locations that we're going to be moving folks out of. Those four locations have about 10 different services that are being provided currently, and these offices are out at the airport area. I'm not sure if you've been out there, but we've been leasing those buildings since at least 1999, so, you know, well over 20, almost 25 years. Some of them are in pretty bad shape. We've had to deal with floods, roof issues, mold abatement, a lot of these things that have happened in that, in those buildings, and so, it's a, really a welcome change for our staff to look forward to being in a modern building, one where we can really provide good services to our clients. Since 2000, we've, we've paid over $9 million in leasing costs with no equity to the county. That, that money is, of course, completely gone. There, we're going to have three different divisions we'll have, our adult division, our AB 109 division, and also our training division will also be housed out there. The other cool thing about this is that what we've never really had a chance to do is to provide onsite programming space for partners, for us to be able to provide services, program services for our clients there on-site. Oftentimes, a lot of our folks get lost from referral to making it out to a place where they need to get treatment services, and so, we'll have actual space there that will allow us to be able to provide things like substance use order, just treatment, aggression replacement therapy, those kind of things. We plan on having a clothing closet. We're going to partner hopefully with Food Bank to be able to provide some food giveaways. We're going to partner hopefully with Food Bank to be able to provide some food giveaways, barbering services for our clients. A lot of those things that we've not, that we see are needs for our folks, we'll be able to embed those things in a, in a, in a building where we'll all be there together. And so the other thing I think is really good is that the proximity of where we are on Pontiac, you know, it's an efficiency, just like Susan was talking about, efficiency of services, a proximity of services, along with what, you know, a lot of our folks access services through the Department of Social Services. And so it just makes a whole lot of sense for us to be in that area so that, again, it makes it a little bit easier for our clients to be able to access those services. The last thing I'll just mention, and, you know, we talked about training and a lot of great things that the sheriff's doing. But we'll also have training site area there for mat room and some other things that we need to do for use of force training and those kind of things as well. So it'll bring together so much all under one roof that has been really needed for the last 30 years. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Yeah. I'd like to follow up. Yeah, Chief, so I don't think I've seen all four properties that you have. Are they all four over by the airport?
All four, yes, all four.
Yeah, I know that there's the two big office complexes right, kind of right next to each other.
Yeah, those are on fine. Yeah, those are on fine. And then we've got two more on winery.
Oh, okay. I haven't seen the winery ones. But the ones on fine, they're, they're old, beat-up buildings and?
And we did our best to, to, you know, we got into those buildings so probably about eight, seven, eight years ago. And so, yeah, we did our best to rehab those buildings. But, you know, they, they've got some, some issues that when you have to lease a building, you can only do so much to invest in it. So to be able to, to, from the, the ground up, to be able to, to let Public Works know what we need, let the architects know what we need, it's a great opportunity for us. And thinking about expansion, we'll, we'll house about 250 folks once we're moved in. But we'll have the ability to expand even further based on the, the space that we'll have available.
And the ones over there on fine, that's where people that are on probation, they can go out there and there's services there and their families can go there and there's a big lobby. And all of that stuff will be at this new location, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And the good thing is that instead of having four different lobby areas, we'll have one where we'll be able to connect folks to where they need to, need to be there all in one place.
Fantastic. All right, thank you.
All right, Chief.
Thank you.
That is the end of the presentation. So again, this is just a receive and file item. Any additional follow-up questions for Will Kettler or staff before we move on to the next item? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item.
We now move to item number 12. Under Public Works and Planning, adopt resolution to fill a supervising architect position with extra help for Tyree Noel Roger Davidson effective October 23, 2024.
Good morning, Will Kettler, once again. Nothing really further to add. There's some, just to clarify, some unfinished business that needs to be resolved. And Mr. Davidson was architect and worker on some of those items, so.
Any questions on this particular item? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on item 12? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back for a motion. We got a motion by Buddy. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 13. Under Public Works and Planning, conduct public protest hearing as required by Public Utilities Code Section 6234 for Board of Supervisors to receive, hear, and pass upon any timely written protests, including any timely written objections made by any interested party against Board granting franchise up to 25 years on a non-exclusive basis by ordinance to Toro Energy of California upon annual payment of a franchise fees to the county to construct, maintain, and use pipes and appurtenances, appur- appurtenance, struggling with that word, appurtenances for transmitting derived gas from Toro Energy's landfill gas-to-energy project, County's American Avenue disposal site for needing all purposes is allowed by county approved conditional use permit and/or road permit condition from landfill gas to energy project as American Avenue disposal site at 18950 West American Avenue curving in and along across, upon, and under following public streets and highways within unincorporated area of Fresno County from the County's American Avenue disposal site eastward on West American Avenue for approximately four miles and then southward on South Madera Avenue for approximately four miles to a PG&E connection location approximately a half a mile north of West Manning Avenue, just east of South Madera Avenue, South Route 145 Kermin. And after conducting and closing public protest hearing due to the following as determined by Board: A, determine that no timely written protests, including timely written objections have been made against Board granting a non-exclusive franchise to Toro Energy, and Board may proceed to act on recommend Action 3. Or B, determine that one or more timely written protests, including timely written objections, have been made against Board granting a non-exclusive franchise to Toro Energy and have been heard by Board and passed upon such protests, including such objections, as applicable. One, protests, including objections, are sufficient. Two, protests, including objections, are overruled or denied. Or three, protests, including objections, are sufficient. And C, if Board determines that all such protests, including all such objections, are insufficient or overruled or denied, Board may proceed to recommend Action 3. And D, if Board determines that only some of such protests, including some of such objections, are insufficient or overruled or denied, Board will determine and recommend in Action 2E, if remaining protests, including remaining objections, are sufficient. And E, if Board determines that any such protests, including objections, are sufficient, then Board may grant such protests and sustain such objections and abandon those proceedings and conduct first hearing, including first reading of an ordinance granting non-exclusive franchise as described above to Toro Energy. Rave reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set second hearing ordinance for December 3, 2024, and designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of proposed ordinance and direct the clerk of the Board to post and publish required summary in accordance with Government Code Section 25124B1.
The floor is yours.
Aaron Hagenson, Public Works and Planning. Okay, sorry about that. Aaron Hagenson, Public Works and Planning. Bernie's already said everything, but with this recommendation, your Board will hold a public protest hearing, conduct a first reading, and then set a second reading for the ordinance. And the ordinance will give Toro Energy 25-year non-exclusive franchise to construct the landfill gas transmission pipeline in county right-of-way. It's from the landfill on American Avenue to Madera Avenue. And then this, the second portion of the pipeline, which is not in county right-of-way, it's Caltrans right-of-way along Madera, State Route 145. And they'll be doing a separate encroachment process through Caltrans for that. And then it culminates in the PG&E connection point. So this ordinance will give the county 2% of the total gross revenues from the use of the facilities over a 25-year basis. And these, by law, can be deposited into the general fund or somewhere else if your Board directs it. And the estimated revenue would be 7.8 million over 25 years. And then this is, the, the reason this came about is because Toro and the county, the landfill, have developed the landfill gas-to-energy project. And your Board approved an agreement in April of 2022 where we, we share the net receipts with Toro of 51% of the net receipts of the project already. And that is to generate 134 million over 25 years that will go into the landfill enterprise fund. So, and that would fund any operations or future expansions at the disposal site. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Before I get to my script, which I'm confident is going to be accurate, I'm going to ask board members, any general questions you have for staff before I have to follow this procedure? All right. And there'll be opportunities to ask questions along the way, so don't worry. I'm now opening the public protest hearing for the non-exclusive franchise, which is recommended Action 1, for the Board to receive, hear, and pass upon any timely written protests, including any timely written objections made by any interested persons against the Board granting the non-exclusive franchise to Toro Energy as described in Staff's Agenda Item. At this time, the Board will hear from members of the public in favor or against the matter. Is there anyone here in the public at this time to speak in favor or against this item? I see none. I am now closing the public protest hearing. Board members, do you have any comments at this time? Seeing none, I am now going to ask the clerk. Have we received any written protests, emails, any kind of communication in opposition to this request today?
We have not.
All right. Hearing that, County Council, I am now prepared to undertake recommended Action 2 since there are no protest. Is that the appropriate action to take at this time?
Correct.
All right. Under recommended Action 2, I will entertain a motion and a second for the Board to make the following determination: to determine that no timely written protests, including timely written objections, have been made against the Board granting of the non-exclusive franchise to Toro Energy, and that the Board may proceed to act on recommending, recommended Action number 3, which is the first reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That passes. There are no abstentions. That is unanimous. So, under recommended Action 3, I am now opening the first public hearing of the ordinance, which the clerk read into the record at the commencement of this item. This includes the first reading of an ordinance granting the non-exclusive franchise to Toro Energy. After the hearing for the first reading of the ordinance, I will call for the Board's vote on waiving of reading of the ordinance in its entirety and setting the second hearing of the proposed ordinance for December 3, 2024. At this time, the Board will hear from members of the public in favor or against the ordinance. So anyone in the public wishing to speak now is your time in regards to the ordinance. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any comments from board members? Seeing no comments from board members, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve recommended actions 3, 4, and 5.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And I heard unanimous approval, so that also goes 5-0. We are now done with this item.
Thank you.
See, Counsel, that wasn't too bad. But I'm glad you were right there to back me up.
We now move to item number 14. Under Public Works and Planning, consider and adopt the mitigated negative declaration included mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for amendment application number 3856 based on initial number 8389.
All right. Staff, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. David Randall with Public Works and Planning Department. This is an amendment and application to rezone a two-acre parcel to CM conditional zoning. It was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission at its June 27 meeting. However, your Board needs to take final action to approve this item. Parcel is located on the southwest corner of Central, of Central and Peach Avenues. The parcel had previously been developed with a motorcycle shop. That portion of the parcel was zoned for the single use itself. The motorcycle shop is no longer being utilized and they are proposing five different by right uses in the conditional zoning, those being wholesaling, warehousing, caretakers' residence, taxidermists, and advertising structures. The general plan land use designation under the Roosevelt Community Plan is for general industrial, which is consistent with the proposed zoning. There was initial study prepared and mitigated negative decoration is recommended for your approval. Should your Board decide that this is an appropriate action, staff would recommend that you also can consider adding the indemnification condition that's in your staff report. That concludes my summary. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for staff? Buddy, this is in your district. Do you have any, any words of wisdom for us before we open it to the public?
No, I don't. I want to hear from the public.
Outstanding. So with that, any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Good morning, Board. Nick Burgess, I'm the owner of the property here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Burgess? Thank you for being here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to our Board for an action.
Okay. So moved.
We have a motion for staff's recommendation, including the items which were read into the record by David Randall. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
We now move to item number 15. Under Public Works and Planning, consider appeal of Planning Commission's technical denial to permit the development of a 16-rural residential development with an exception for private road with a minimum count centerline road curb radius per county ordinance code 17.72.333A in RR Zone District.
It's my understanding with this particular item, we did not have a full complement of Planning Commissioners. And so while there was a majority, it wasn't, or plurality, it wasn't the majority necessary to, you know, to come here today with, you know, their favorable response. So with that, staff, please present this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Twanamutunga with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This item comes to your Board on an appeal of the Planning Commission's technical denial at its July 18, 2024 hearing. The technical denial is based on the, on the four approval votes, whereas in order to approve this action, five votes representing a minimum majority of the total Planning Commission were required for approval of the general plan and rezone pursuant to Chapter 872.6.040 of the zoning ordinance. Staff would like to note that there are two minor typos in the Agenda Item, which staff would like to correct for the record. The first typo is located in recommended Action 2E. It should reference recommended Action C, not D, as the summary to be prepared and published is for recommended Action 2C, not the ordinance code referenced in D. The second typo can be found on Page 4, Paragraph 3. Variance number 4140 is referenced, but the correct variance number is 4170. The project request is for a general plan amendment application to amend the land use designation of the subject parcels from agricultural to rural residential, a rezone from AE 20 to rural residential, a variance to waive the public road frontage requirement, and a tentative tract map of 16 lots with an exception for private road width requirements. The subject parcels are located on the southeast corner of Frein Road and Willow Avenue. If your Board determines that the proposed project is appropriate with the proposed general plan amendment and the findings for the variance and tentative tract map, with exceptions, can be made, as described in the staff report to the Planning Commission, it would be appropriate to approve the recommended actions, including the additional recommended conditional approval for the applicant to indemnify the county in case of subsequent litigation. The applicant is represent, is, the applicant is present here if you have any questions for them today. That concludes my presentation unless you have any questions for staff.
I have a couple of quick questions for County Council. So there were two minor changes. I see them as minor, but that does not harm our ability to take action on this today. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe those are technical typographical errors and they do not materially affect the accuracy of the description in the agenda.
Okay. And Chris, did you have something?
Just to begin correct the record on Page 4. That's, should have been variance number 4140, not 4170.
4140 duly noted. And recommended actions can be found, you know, on the first page of item 15. So there's item 1, item 2, and then it's A through E, correct, is what staff is recommending. All right. Excellent. Now that we have that all worked out. And is it possible, when it comes time for voting, to take all of that under one action? Or do we need to do two actions?
You can take that under one action.
One action. All right. Duly noted. So with that, any additional questions? Supervisor Brandow, this is in your district. Any questions on this item?
Well, I wanted to ask a question first. On the Planning Commission's technical denial, I get that. All the findings made, so I'm very supportive of that. But do we have a full Planning Commission right now? We do?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we don't have any vacancies?
No, we don't.
Okay, so this is an unusual situation. There just weren't enough people there on this particular day?
Correction, there were enough people on that particular day, but they just didn't make it a majority vote.
Got it. Okay. All right. All right. It wasn't for a lack of a quorum or something like that?
Right, it has to be a super majority, a majority of the true vote.
Any other comments? With that, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Dave Waspiller. I'm one of the developers and I want to thank you for this opportunity today to listen to us. to us and go forward. Twenty years ago, I developed a piece right next door called Willow Ridge, had this pretty much the same kind of concerns the neighbors posed and everything, and it went very well. In fact, in conjunction, it was across the street from Monteverde. And those projects have done very, very well. And twenty years later, older and wiser, we've taken the time, my staff, I've got a great team, and we've really addressed a lot of issues. And of course, there's more issues that have come up over time. But we've really taken the time and steps to be proactive with the neighborhood, be proactive with water issues, be proactive on a lot of other concerns, including the signalization that's coming up that we're going to be contributing to at Willow and Frynt, that we've agreed with the county. That said, the water issues that we've done, we're taking a proactive approach, and thanked Ken Schmidt and another engineer that did the balance of watering out there, we are going to be probably using half the water that all our other neighbors are using at this time. In fact, Ken said we're going to be a prototype of future development in those rural areas because of the water concerns. So I wanted to say that to you because we've really taken a proactive stance on that. That said, I can take questions, or I can hand it off to my partner, Austin Yul, for details. Any questions? Okay.
Anyone else in the public wishing to comment?
Chair, vice chair, and other supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to be here to address you. I am a member of the community at Monteverde, and I'm here to identify risk and water. I'd like you to concentrate, if you would, in your thinking related to whatever you decide on the issue of whether this development by Elagante Estates goes forward or not, that the two wells that support one hundred and twenty-five homes in Monteverde are two wells. There's going to be sixteen wells going in nearby us. Given that water is necessary and understanding that there is what I have been told by a knowledgeable party to be an excellent hydrology report, my purpose here today is to identify risk and your response to it before it occurs as a catastrophe, if that were to occur. Certainly, the idea of accessing needed supply is worth considering. There is a supply of water that's close to Monteverde, and it's controlled by the city of Fresno. My suggestion to you is to, in the letter dated October 21st and identified at your front entrance here, is to discuss, negotiate, prepare, allow yourselves the room that if there is a failure, that it does not become one that is going to be particularly negative for all parties. So as far as your decision is concerned, you have lots of technical information, and my purpose to be here today is to impress upon you the need to consider reducing risk that does not go away with a decision to go ahead. Clearly, there are pros and cons of development. There are risks of doing that, but let's face it, we're all in a position to see the future as growth. So I'm not for or against this particular development, but I am for keeping two wells going to keep one hundred and twenty-five homes where I live in good condition. Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment. Oh, we do have additional public comment. Please step forward, state your name.
Good morning. I'm Jeremy Banducci. I live in the Pill Hill community, which runs adjacent to this proposed community that they're considering developing. Our community is seventeen homes, and it's all small two-to-five acre lots currently. My concern is predominantly around water usage and the drop that we have recently seen in our water levels here at our community. So within the past seventeen, eighteen months, in our community alone, in the seventeen homes, we've had to drill three new wells and drop four pumps. My property back in 1999, when I purchased it, the water level was at one hundred and thirty-five feet. Last year, I had to drop my pump to two hundred and fifty feet. Across the street, my neighbor just recently drilled a brand-new well. That was back in August of '23, and Strickland Well Drilling said that his water level dropped forty feet in three years. So our concern is that with sixteen more straws drinking out of the same cup, how much water are we going to have left to maintain our current homes in that area, let alone additional homes? There was a hydrology report that they spoke about that lists that this is going to be reduced usage on the land. That hydrology report mentioned that they irrigated the land. It's not irrigated land. It was ranged cattle ground. And so you have fictitious data in this report that makes you lead to believe, oh, well, we're going to put these houses in, we're going to have a reduction in the water usage. But there's currently three old houses, which I think two of them have been knocked down already, with no yards except for one, and no irrigation. So all of a sudden, you go from a piece of property that's using minimal water to having a piece of property with seventeen homes with large lots. And I'm sorry, but if I'm going to go spend a million dollars on a lot, which is what they're going to cost, I'm not going to put a little tiny postisjamp of a yard. That's just not what you do. So I believe that the proposed water usage is probably well understated in this property. So the largest concern is just around the fact that our water levels are dropping so quickly, and many of the neighbors that had their wells drilled to the kind of first glass of water, so to speak, have now had it gone down to four hundred feet, and that's it. After that, it's all granite. You can't go any deeper. Once that runs dry, then we're out of water. Additionally, there's been some environmental concerns. We had a badger that actually came from that property and came into our neighborhood, which is kind of neat to see. But I just thought it would be noted that there is some environmental concerns potentially around species like that that is a special concern in the area. And then the maybe small, but increase in traffic. Our neighborhood coming down Frynt is pretty hard to get into, and as we have more and more traffic on the road, I'm concerned about that as well, just to get into and out of our neighborhood. But in summary, the water concerns are our major issue and our major concern, and, you know, how quickly we've all had to drop our pumps and how quickly we've seen that water recede. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
How long have you lived in that area? You said Pill Hill is where you are?
Yeah, I've been there for four years.
And was that also developed by the Wassmillers, or was that a different developer?
Different developer, yes.
Okay, so four years?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, supervisors. My name is Austin Yul. I'm a project developer. Address seven three five West Aluvio, Suite 103, Fresno, California. Just wanted to respond to a few of the comments, just provide a little bit of clarity, and I appreciate both neighbors having spoken. We had the great pleasure of meeting with them on several occasions, including the Monteverde Homeowners Association, as well as Pill Hill. A neighbor had actually hosted a neighborhood meeting at their home. Given those meetings, we went through and updated the project. We reduced the number of lots. We also put strict restrictions in the CCNRs on overall water usage for the respective project. As it relates to the badger or any special status species, biologist Eric Smith with Volmer Natural Lands Consulting is here from Berkeley, who has done field surveys. Those respective mitigation measures, if any, will be put into place within the mitigation measures that are approved by this project. They have surveyed the property for the respective species and have not found an issue, but there will be pre-construction surveys even put into place in order to mitigate any potential impacts, though none are expected. As far as water use or well drilling in the area, at the request of actually a neighbor in Pill Hill, just in September, we had hired Bradley and Sons, who's very familiar with this immediate area, and they actually went out and tested the existing residence well. His well is still producing, and it's consistent with its historical use at about twenty-six gallons per minute. Ken Schmidt is here, the hydrogeologist, all of you are, I'm sure, well aware of, who has conducted studies in particular for this property, as well as the neighboring property, and has data and information as it relates to the sustainability of water. But overall, I'll reassure that reduced irrigation and landscaping, a strict drought-tolerant landscaping protocol, as well as procedures to match irrigation practices in the city of Fresno, are being implemented by this project and will be enforced by the CCNRs, as well as the conditions of approval. And again, happy to make the biologist, the well driller, Ken Schmidt, available in case you have any questions. But we took the neighbors' comments very serious in the past two years that we've been working on this project and have tried to incorporate their questions and address any issues they've raised.
Austin, if you don't mind, I would love to hear from Ken.
Sure.
Yeah. I've got a couple of questions. Ken, thank you for coming today. It seems to me, and I understand the badger situation, but it seems the main concern is about water. That's your specialty. You've been a consultant on this project. Talk to us a little bit about the water out there.
This area that's northeast of the Enterprise Canal, and when it's a wide area, you know, which means they have no surface water, like in a district, the water level has been going down about half a foot per year in the long term. And in a short term, it goes down quicker, and then the, and sometimes it goes down slower. One of the biggest sources of recharge is water in the Dry Creek, Little Dry Creek Channel. And in the last year or two, quite a bit of that water is water that comes out of Big Dry Creek from the dam, and it bypasses, so it doesn't flood downstream in Clovis. And when that water runs up there, it eventually goes into Little Dry Creek, and there's quite a lot of seepage out of that. We've done quite a lot of studies of that. What we're proposing in this project is consistent with what the county of Fresno has been requiring in this type of groundwater study for the last about, probably six or eight years, even going back before the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And what they tell us when we do the, it's called a section two dash H hydrogeologic study. I was here in 1972 in this room when they established the requirement for the section two dash H studies. I've done hundreds or more than that of them. But we did the studies that way. We believe that they're going to have to control the use of water. It's mainly got, you either get more surface water, you get a surface water project, and probably in an area like this, it wouldn't be used directly, but it would be recharged to the groundwater. You either develop a project like that through Sigma, or you have to decrease the consumptive use. And what we've done in this project, just like many others in the last eight or ten years, is come up with a balance where we're going to recharge enough storm runoff to balance a consumptive use. So when you have a project with individual wells and septic tanks, the septic tank effluent, which we call, is from inside water use, goes back and recharges the groundwater, at least most of it. And so we're trying to say, well, what source of water do we have to balance the consumptive use? It's storm runoff. So we've limited the consumptive use due to landscape irrigation a lot. It's a, and it's a major change, and I think it's the future in this whole, like rural residential areas, which I've been around, you know, for thirty or forty years, the rural residential areas, they're going to have to come up with getting a source of water and recharging, working with a Sigma project, and the county is largely responsible in these wide areas like this. Or they're going to have to cut back on the landscape thing. So I see our project as a prototype of what is going to have to be done, even with existing developments out there. If you want the water level to quit going down, you're going to have to make a balance like we're proposing. So I'm comfortable, I think, the fact that people, that they have to drill wells and people do things, many of these are pump problems, they're not necessarily a well problem. There might be a well plugging problem, but it's not like the groundwater is drastically going away. Since we did Dave Wassmiller's first project, the Willow Ridge Study in 1995, the water level went down about a point eight feet per year, and that is largely not due to his project, but the other pumping, including Monteverde, the area east of it and all that. So that's where we are in the groundwater. They have to address it by getting surface water supplies, which I believe surface water supplies are available in this area. And so it's a matter of the county working through the Sigma process to do some more recharge out there, or, and/or starting to limit the consumptive use of these new projects. And the days of the sort of arrogant irrigation, I would call it, when you drive around out there and see some of these big lots and the kind of irrigation they're doing, it's not, not a card, you know, in the future.
Okay.
That's where we are in the water.
Ken, with the work that's being done on Big Dry Creek right now, I'm sure you're aware, the Army Corps of Engineers is rewriting their manual so we can permanently, or hold water back in Big Dry Creek longer, so it's not only used for flood control, it can be used for recharge and conveyance.
Yeah.
The county has invested in a turnout at the Frynt Kern Canal, which I don't know where we are with that particular project. But my question is this, you indicated that Little Dry Creek helps to recharge this particular area, which receives water from Big Dry Creek. So in a lot of the studies and analysis you did, did you take that into consideration that we're hopeful, we've got a five-entity, almost MOU between city of Fresno, the county, the city of Clovis, and what we're attempting to do with Big Dry Creek, which I think can hold about thirty thousand acre feet when it's full, is that part of your study as well, and looking, forward-looking, that could be a huge benefit to this area?
Well, there's, there's quite a history here. For example, this happened before, before about the late 1970s, they intentionally dumped a water, a bunch of water out down Dry Creek from the reservoir, and measured a lot of wells to see what happened, and it raised the water level like heck along Dry Creek. And Dry Creek still is an undeveloped, you know, we do work for the city of Clovis mostly on new well projects, but we've worked on their master water plans, and Dry Creek is an undeveloped, you know, there's some nice parklands in there, but it could be developed into a much greater recharge facility. The problem is probably that maybe Clovis hasn't had enough extra water to do that. You know, their, their water outside of the Enterprise Canal is due to their water banking agreement with FID. But if you, if the agencies work together, and I believe fully that the city of Fresno has a great amount of surface water, and if they can work together, they can start recharging there. And then, besides recharging down by the dam and in Dry Creek Channel itself, this water that's in the bypass is also, even though we don't like, we kind of don't like bypassing that water, and it ends up in the Samuel King River, but I'm telling you, a part of that water that seeps into the groundwater is very useful. So if you could run it where you bypassed the water, but when it got to a certain place, stop, don't, don't put any more water in there. But my idea would be then to continue some of this bypass water recharging also, not just at the dam, but... just at the dam, but the area that we're talking about up there would be benefited a lot by recharge up there.
Right. Thank you. Austin, I would love to ask you a follow-up question on water, too. Thanks, Ken. So, and Dave kind of started off on, us off on this, about the water use. So I know you reduced the number of actual residences from the, from when the project was first dreamt up and initiated, but, so hopefully there's a benefit to water there. But I think you mentioned somewhere in passing, are you going to put restrictions on types of landscaping, or, and is there enforcement procedures in place so that somebody doesn't just go off the rail with their own individual residents?
Correct, yeah, no, I appreciate you raising that. One of the things initially that we're going to do is actually require a reduced amount of what would be traditional landscaping. So on a, on a two-acre lot, there's a Zone A and Zone B. And so those will be reduced. And the, the Zone A, which would be the surrounding area, which would be left in natural scape and natural terrain, and managed and maintained by the HOA. And then the immediate area around the house, which will have landscaping, but again, landscaping to be consistent with drought-tolerant landscaping practices. And that'll be managed and overseen by the homeowners association and governed by the CCNRs, which would be recorded on the project. And, you know, it will, it'll comply with, we're using the city of Fresno standards for irrigation practices and irrigation use, which is consistent with state, state requirements, state standards.
All right. Cool, thank you. Thanks, Austin.
Yeah, my pleasure.
So to our staff, you can confirm that they've met these requirements, Fresno County regulations and policies regarding water?
Yes, they have. As far as the hydrogeologic test that was done in 2022, they had adequate water, gallons per minute. They tested two wells. One was about 33.6 gallons per minute, the other was about 39 gallons per minute, so it was adequate for the, for the number of lots. That was actually done with more lots, or anticipated than what they're proposing now. They dropped two lots out of proposals, so we were satisfied with the study that was done.
Right. Sir, you had another comment?
Yes. This comment is directed to your attorney, and that is, is a private landowner restricted in his use of his own well? Can a private landowner be restricted other than by the actions of a homeowner association related to water use?
I think that's too open-ended of a question with all the circumstances.
That's way too open-ended of a question, because theoretically, they're monotonous pumpers, so even in Sigma, they're not.
Restricted.
I think Ken could answer that question. They're not technically regulated, is that correct? Yeah.
Well, obviously, the point is, can there be effective control of water use by a private owner of a well? That's the underlying issue.
Well, the answer, the answer is yes, but you're not going to like my answer. That is, we put meters at your house, and as soon as you exceed your allotment, we turn it off. But I'll tell you, I'm one board member, and I think on this issue, a lot of us look at things the same way. When it comes to the rural lifestyle, it's very important for individuals to be accountable and responsible. And so to the extent that we have developments that do that, and recognize that they may have to change how they operate moving forward, recognizing that water is becoming tighter, I think that there is a great opportunity for communities to be able to function well together. But if there is not that, if we have individuals who say, I was here 20 years ago, I've got an acre and a half of landscaped fescue, I've got redwood trees, and I'm going to continue to use 10 acre feet of water, you know, a year on my one and a half acres, you don't want government stepping in and saying, all right, you're limited to a half acre a foot a year of water. And that effectively will solve the problem, so to speak. But I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in local communities figuring out ways to address challenges that we have moving forward.
The problem exists, and quite clearly, it's not going to go away. There, the recharge rates that we've been told about, I'm certainly hopeful that they're that and more. I do see the potential for widespread development that could be beneficial, not just to the coffers at the county, but to all of us. But I am concerned that we might end up in a risky condition.
A question I have for you, at Monte Verde, which is a beautiful area, I represent that because it's on the, the proper side of the street, as far as my district is concerned. Are there opportunities for Monte Verde to save additional water and maybe change the landscaping that they have in place?
Okay, I'm, I'm now speaking as a private landowner there. And my impression is that Monte Verde is a jewel of this county, because it is green. And if you change that, or if you would like to change that and find a way to do it, I'm sure you can do it. I'm also sure you will change Monte Verde. Now, I don't think that's what the county wants, because it was a development that occurred with the intent of being, I believe, a showcase for the county. And I think you've achieved that goal. Although all of you have been here as members of the board, less time than I've been in Fresno County, I can say definitively that I believe that Monte Verde is, in fact, quite different than most of the county. And I think that you gentlemen will all agree with that.
It's a beautiful area.
Sure.
Sure. We, we appreciate your, your comments. It is a beautiful place. Absolutely, I give you that, because I've been out there several times, and we appreciate you bringing that up. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, and I do hope that you'll consider the avoidance of risk issue, as well as the use and what you can do legally with a private landowner owning his own well.
Yep, thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion on this item. Okay.
On this item? On this item?
What is the?
Not this item.
This is, this is item 15, so this is related to a development. All right? So with that, I'm going to close the public portion, bring it back to the board for any further comments, or, and I will state for the record that on this, Sal is abstaining, and so it'll be the four of us, I believe, on this item.
Okay. All right, I'll let, he's out of the room. Then I just want to say, for starters, I had, I had some questions about water, but the folks that came in here and spoke today, you made solid, solid points, so I created this additional line of questioning. And, and I have concerns. And I, quite frankly, I always have concerns about water. So I, your, your concerns resonate with me. The badger thing, I'd like to see a picture of that badger. But I think that in the future, we probably will be faced with even more restrictions in water. But right now, in my mind, this project has gone and met Fresno County's current rules and regulations regarding, and that's why I came back and asked the staff, wasn't even just willing to take the developer's consultant, or the developer himself. I came back and asked the staff if we cleared that hurdle, and I really do believe that we have. And so I, although I share concerns about water, I don't think out of nowhere that we can just penalize this particular project when they've met all of our concerns and met all of our, all our regulations and requirements regarding water. So I am going to make a motion to approve this item, all of these individual items in one vote, as recommended.
So it's recommended action, basically, we've done one, since we're listening to the appeal, and then two, it's items A through E, as in the report, with the revisions that staff made. Is there a second to that motion? We have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes four with one recusal.
And that second was Supervisor Mendez, correct? Okay, I didn't hear it very well, thank you. We now move to item number 16, Board Supervisor Committee Comments and Reports.
We will start with Supervisor Pacheco, none. And if you can go grab salad, it'd be great. And we'll skip over Supervisor Mendez. Do you have any reports, anything to report out on?
No, I was, Ken, it was good to see you today. Worked with Ken a lot, on a lot of Sigma issues, on a lot of GSA, so very knowledgeable groundwater movement, man.
Excellent. And Supervisor Brandow?
Well, I kind of already mentioned one of mine. On Saturday, I went out to the sheriff's department, held a 168th birthday for that department and employee recognition. And so that was held out at the property where the shooting ranges, where we discussed, and they have a great park out there, and it's actually very beautiful property. But we got to have a lot of great food and hang out with a lot of great folks and music, sheriff and former sheriff Mims, and whole team was out there, and really ended on a great note. There were three bicycles that were given away in a, in a raffle, and, and, but, and it was first come, first served, and there was two boys' bikes and a little girl's bike by decoration. And then the way it all raffled down, a guy won the first, first raffle, he chose a boy's bike, second guy won a raffle, chose a boy's bike, so now we only have a girl's bike, and I think like a seven-year-old girl won that raffle. So ended up perfect, it was a great day. That's all.
Excellent. Supervisor Quintero, do you have any comments? All right, next item.
We now move to item number 17, Board Appointments.
Supervisor Pacheco, do you have any appointments? Supervisor Quintero, no. Supervisor Mendez?
None.
And I have one, to the Civil Service Commission, I would like to appoint Raymond McPherson to the vacant District 5 seat, which expires on 1/6/2025. And with that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on Mr. McPherson serving on the Civil Service Commission? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to our board for action on that item. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 18, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any manner not on this agenda.
All right. And I believe if you're here to talk about IHSS matters, I can tell you that you will speak when we get to closed-session items, because IHSS is going to be discussed in closed session. So this is only for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, let's move on to the next one.
Public Presentations for Closed Session Items 19 through 23.2.
All right. Members wishing to speak on closed-session items now, please step forward and make your comments.
Buenos dias. Good morning. Mi nombre es Apolonia Valencia. My name's Apolonia Valencia. Tenía un año que no, no venía. I had a year that I hadn't come. Porque no me sentía escuchada, no sentía que nos apoyaban. So I felt like I wasn't listened to, or I didn't feel like you supported us. Sentía que no nos tomaban en cuenta, que no les importaban nuestras necesidades. I felt like you did not take us into consideration, and that you didn't value our necessities. So I got up today and I said, I am going. It has been a year, and you did not take us into consideration in the, in the budget hearing. So we're, we have already completed the year, and you still have not taken us into consideration in the budget. So I got up today because my needs are the same needs as all other providers. So three days ago, I went to the store and a police officer stopped me. So I got a ticket because I don't have insurance. And he asked me, why do I not have car insurance? And it is because I cannot afford it. I cannot pay, and it had been three days that I did not pay, that my insurance was expired because I cannot afford it. My check is $2,000, a pay period. And I feel defeated. Because everything is going up. Everything but our wages. He asked me, why do I not pay my car insurance? So I pay over $1,000 for my house, over $1,000 for water, and I cannot afford it, and we are in crisis right now. So she's talking about car insurance. She cannot afford it, and she has to have it. It is required to have car insurance, but she cannot afford car insurance. So it is unfair that us as citizens who pay, who pay taxes are going through this crisis. So she wants to let you know that she want, we want to work with you. We want to work together so that she doesn't have to struggle. So she will pay her, her insurance, she will pay her house, she will pay her bills, but she might not be able to buy groceries. Because what you, what we are getting paid is not enough. And I know that you would not be able to survive with the income that we, we receive.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanne Cusimano, and like her, I'm here just to kind of give my history. Up until December, my husband and I, we both worked, both had full-time jobs, we both made good money. My husband was diagnosed with stage 4. made good money. My husband was diagnosed with stage four pancreatic cancer spread to his bones. He was unable to work. I had to quit my job to take care of him. It's a full-time job. So we lost our apartment. We moved in with his parents and, sorry, up until then, you know, we, we just, it's been hard. It's been really, really hard. With all his appointments, all his doctor's appointments, his chemo, he goes through radiation. In fact, he has chemo today, too. So I love this program. I appreciate it. I, I don't know where we'd be without it. However, it is, as much as it does help us, it's just, it's really, really hard. We struggle a lot. It's, we went from having everything to, life happens, you know? It, it just, it hit us hard. And we both lost our jobs. I mean, I wasn't, I'm not able to work full-time because taking care of him is a full-time job. He broke his femur. And because of that, we were able to find a three-inch mass in his pancreas. So on top of having a shattered femur, he has a three-inch, a baseball-sized tumor in his leg, and the cancer spread to his, his bones. So he's got stage four pancreatic cancer. We go to doctor's appointments at least four times a week. Like I said, he goes through radiation and chemotherapy every week. And so it's not possible for me to hold a full-time job. And so I don't know if any of you understand what it's like to go from making good money to making sixteen dollars an hour and trying to survive off of one paycheck, taking care of my husband and myself. So if you could, you know what I mean? I don't know. It's, it's hard. It's really hard. So it just, it's, it's a struggle. It's a, it's a real struggle. And trying to make ends meet, paying our, our rent, paying our car payment, everything, it's just, everything just comes crashing down and life happens, you know? And I understand that. So I don't know who makes the, I don't know. It's hard. Something's got to change, you know? I mean, we're, we're, this is a program, yeah, but it's not enough. It's not enough when life happens. It's not enough when, when, you know, it's just not enough.
Thank, thank you for sharing with us. We appreciate, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Grove. Been a while since I spoke to you guys. A few years ago, Dad, I used to do the, fill out the applications, do the resume thing and all that. I'm in my 50s, and people don't want to hire people in their 50s. You know, they want the younger, faster people. And then I heard about IHSS, and they don't care how old you are. And that's, that's why I'm an IHSS care provider, part of the reason, because it's hard to get a job at other places at my age. And you guys are easily able to live an independent life, take care of yourself, not have to reach out to others, other organizations or anything. And that's what we want. We want to be able to live independent lives, you know, on our own pay and be able to take care of ourselves, not having to reach out to all these offerings and charities and all this other stuff. We want to have a chance to live like you do independently. Okay? And I'm not sure if you really care about how big this really affects people, because I understand your jurisdiction is Fresno County. But when you, when you badmouth us and you knock us and you neglect us, you're not just neglecting one of us, you're neglecting literally millions all over the entire union, counting the members, the workers, the clients, other members. You're knocking a lot of people by doing that. Because we're not just United States. SEU 2015 is California, but SEIU the whole thing. It reaches out to Canada, reaches out to Puerto Rico and others. Now we're talking millions of people that you guys are badmouthing and neglecting. Because like I said, you do it to one of us, you're doing it to all of us. And a day's going to come, whether it's an election, you're voted out of those seats, or you come to retirement, whatever, each of you will have moved on. IHSS will still be here. SEIU will still be here. SEIU 2015 will still be here. We're all still going to be here, even though each of you, one day, will be gone and removed from those seats. So thank you for listening.
Hi, I'm Olga Valle, and it's been a little bit since I've been here, but I tell, I tell 2015, they don't care. Why do we bother? They don't represent us. They said, some of them came to ask for endorsement a while back, but they forgot. I went shopping right now, and, yeah, things are hot. You, I've been here time and time again, not just for us, but I see that you put money into the Medicare program, the FoodStem program. I, I might be wrong on there, but it's a county program from what I understand. But you also put in money for homeless. Well, you're driving us to homeless. And you have no idea how many of our workers are, are, should, should not even be working because they're, they should be on disability. But they get up and they want to provide, they want to, they want to be part of the contributing factory here in Fresno County. But, you know, it's election time, and who cares? Because you guys got it. You got it. You don't care. Some of you came when you needed, you thought you needed help, and then you didn't come back even to say, well, thank you, way back when. And you help in other issues, but you don't help in this. So we're helping the most needy, and we're their voice. Many, many are not here. You know why? Because they can't. They're there giving, feeding that person. They're there wiping, cleaning up. They're, they're holding that person all the way to the restroom. We're not, we're never too far from that. We're a hair, we're an accident away from that. Or we're our age, because of our age, we're almost there. Why not put the foundation? Why not act on it right now? We're saving the county money by not putting someone else to work for them, to put them in an institution. I wish I could confide in someone to take care of my son. So I could go, and you know what's happened when I have? I have been in the same room where they whack one of, of our HS, HISS recipients because they did, you know, they got the newspaper instead of started eating. I'm there when somebody does something wrong and they're in the store. Go to the stores. They take them out to shop, and you see the, the horrible things they do to them.
Olga, thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you.
I, I know this doesn't even make an impact on you guys, but.
Olga, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to comment on items not related to IHSS? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion on comments. Do we need to come back after closed session, or can we adjourn following closed session?
Mr. Chairman, we are not anticipating any announcements following closed session. So if the board chooses, they may adjourn following closed session.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn following closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously.